My apologies, that was completely my fault that we weren't able to go for it in the morning. And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll make sure we get it next time, but apparently it didn't hurt the crowd. Glad to have you all here. We'll call the Commissioner's Court into order. Uh, we have a low call, Commissioner Chiaro.
Here.
Mr. Rosales.
Here.
Mr. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
County Judge Rick, brother, I'm here as well. It's starting a little bit bad. Father, we thank so much for the eventful rain we've received. It's certainly transformed the appearance for our county over the last few days. And we appreciate your goodness in that respect. Help us to take your business seriously. Help us to take business of the county seriously and conduct ourselves with honorable intent and conduct ourselves in the way you would want us to. And we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still having to get all the pieces together. We'll start off, uh, the agenda's been supposed to require time and we'll start off with any citizen input regarding, uh, agenda items.
I have two that signed up just about now.
Okay.
Um, Karen O'Pella.
Karen?
And mine is not necessarily a citizen's to be heard, but this was the only place I needed to sign up for.
That's fine.
I just, um, thank you for hearing me. I, uh, one of these days I'm gonna remember to put myself on the agenda ahead of an election because there's always something I'm gonna make sure y'all know about after an election. Um, this last election went really well. We did not have a great turnout, uh, less than a thousand voters came out. So just, you know, so y'all know, because I know you guys get questions about that as well. There was one issue, just so, just so you're aware of it in case you are asked. I hadn't gotten a lot of questions. I was, I was a little concerned that maybe I would, but, uh, at the end of the night, I had a one early voting, uh, ballot box that I had forgotten to read, but I didn't, I hadn't turned in the totals to SOS or anything like that. And the totals that are out now are the correct totals. But what had happened was during, um, of course, you know, we're still learning and everything else. So, um, during early voting, we had a, um, one of our, I'm sorry, our JDCs, it's a judge's boot controller, which is the one that holds the, the votes that come from the machines, that went, the screen just went blank. And so we had called Hart, I actually was at lunch when I got the call, but anyway, um, and Hart told the girls to just go ahead and put, they were, you know, they tried to get it to working and it couldn't. And so they told them, put it to the side and leave the MVP in it, which is the thing we read as votes at night. So anyway, I had forgotten that that was pushed to the side, but I knew when I looked at my early voting numbers that they didn't look right. So I just wanted to let you know in case anyone asks, how could we miss? We didn't really miss, you know, if it was, you know, by the end of the night and I didn't go home until it was done and those kinds of things. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that.
Preliminary figure released to, uh, the county wide, so I guess it was later, correct?
Right, exactly, yes.
All votes were counted eventually and, uh, there's no discrepancy.
And what went to the state, you know, which is the last thing I have to do. And, uh, so other than that, everything went, uh, went well. I wanted y'all to know, um, and, uh, we plan to open all of the, uh, voting precincts again in November. So we hope everybody will come out for those elections and, um, we'll get a better turnout, hopefully, so that...
I suspect they were low statewide.
Yeah, they, they were. I mean, and I expected it to be low, but I was hoping more for more.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
Ms. Moy?
Yes, um, we have to do the next item number eight. You want me to just wait until...
Daisy, you can go ahead and address it, right? This regarding ad maids?
Right, this is regarding the item A. And if I prove this approved, the county can consider passing a resolution supporting our decision to prohibit the placement of oil-filled waste disposal wells in facilities within ETJ of the incorporated city. As you know, we have been working on this for over two years and trying to protect ETJ. I have nothing to do with the city. I have nothing to do, I don't like anything. I am here as a private citizen voicing my concerns about these injection wells coming so close to our town. And not just injection wells per se, but other entities that are coming in really, really close into proximity of the, of the city. And, um, you know, we were successful in stopping one about two years ago on 1353. And now we're working on another one, um, that was right next to the ready wall. And as y'all know, lightning struck, uh, the other day. And, um, could have been a very, very dangerous situation. We're very fortunate that we didn't have like another west that happened out in West Texas, like with the fiberglass angle on that, next to that, um, shut down. All the concerns are still there. We were successful this last week in getting a letter from the examiners of the Railroad Commission that heard our case saying that they were going to recommend denying the permit to this Supreme Vacuum Services. And now we're going to go back for a hearing and wait to hear what's going to happen here as well. So I just want to ask you commissioners to really, and just thought we'd think really hard about this because it's very important that something happens. Having dealt with this for quite a while now, I, I feel like there are situations where people don't want to get involved because they might be a friend of someones or they might have, uh, they might think it's gonna hurt the city's business or different things. But I'm saying, number one, as an elected official, your job is to take care of the security of your constituents that you are and, and looking for that above all other things. The examiners have said that they didn't believe that there was one, a public need for this new well to come in. And number two, it wasn't in the best interest of the public. Um, it was more in the best interest of this vacuum company because, um, there are 11 other injection wells within a 10 mile radius. They have a lot of, in other words, they haven't ever been turned away from being able to dump. And they, you know, they want, Supreme wants to have a quicker turnover in, in unloading and they don't want to be paying as much. So the bottom line was, it looked like it was gonna be something that was gonna be beneficial to Supreme more than the citizens. And so I just want you to look at this carefully and understand, I'm not here to dog the Commissioner's Court or to dog City Hall or Councilman or anything. But I think that there's a big need for this. And I think that it is your responsibility and your obligation to protect the citizens by trying to do something to keep these kind of things where they need to be. Uh, we have injection wells out in our ranch and I have never, people have called us to fight those and I say, I'm sorry, I can't do that because I don't like them, but it's part of the industry and we meet them. And so I, that's just how it is. But they don't need to be sitting on top of our cities.
What you're requesting is we pass a resolution urging the legislature, so to speak, to, uh, pass a law prohibiting the placement of saltwater or oil-filled waste disposal wells within the ETJ, the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the Incorporated City or town, correct?
Right, right, right. And, and so with that being said, we did have a language for that bill last, last year, right at the end, and it didn't get in. But, um, I talked with Senator Debrini's office yesterday as a matter of fact, and they are continuing to work on that as well. So, thank you for...
You've, you've want us to voice support for it?
Uh, yes, I want you to voice support. In, in the past, it's been difficult for us to go out and support. And, uh, you just have to keep on until you finally get something going on this bill. I mean, I understand that we don't want to hurt friends. It's not about hurting anybody's feelings. I don't, I don't want to look back 15 years from now if I'm still alive and say, my goodness gracious, look what we've done, what have we left behind for our act, and what are we doing?
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can the county court, County Commissioners Court, issue a county ordinance in the meantime prohibiting injection wells within the certain vicinity of the ETJ of a injection well? Reason I ask that, I spoke with some folks last week in Rungy. Apparently, you can probably answer this, they got some hand injection well or a couple of injection wells either in or close, very close to the...
Right on the city limit board.
Right, and they're very concerned about the location of those disposal wells.
I don't know the answer to your question well enough. The county has the authority to, uh, to make a regulation on that. I, I really don't. We certainly have authority to pass a resolution and, uh, to get our legislative representative to urge opposition to the legislature, things like that. But whether or not we have authority to regulate the location of saltwater disposal wells within our jurisdiction, you know, the county limits, I don't know. You know, I'm always a little skeptical that we would because the state has a regulatory body, the Railroad Commission, that's given pretty, uh, broad authority over those kind of things. And it would be somewhat surprising if the court would hold that we could regulate it contrary to what the Railroad Commission's doing. Now, it looks like we can change what the Railroad Commission has authority to do regarding those things, but not, I'm not sure the county does. But something to look at. Anybody else on this particular subject? Alright.
So, excuse me, so, and now you put this on the agenda, so what steps you want to try to take?
Well, the, the steps we would take is, we'll discuss when we go to the agenda items, we'll discuss whether or not we want to pass a resolution as a body, the Commissioners Court, supporting a, you know, supporting efforts in the legislature to stop the placement of these, uh, wells within the ETJs of the incorporated cities. And, uh, Ms. Yarder has, has posed the question, would we be able to do more than that? Something somewhat different? Or would we actually have the authority to, uh, pass a county ordinance, so to speak, which prohibits that? And I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm not saying yes, no, or...
No, I think Creo County has done something.
I'm just saying, I'm just so much skeptical that we would, but I'm not saying yes or no. I'm research.
I think Creo County has done something similar first.
Okay, well, we can check around. Anybody else have anything on that?
I was just gonna ask why they do it because we fought the first one. And it was just a handful of votes that fought that one. And we won, and we want to win again. And it's looking pretty good, so...
Well, it, it looks like the process in front of the Railroad Commission is going favorably for you right now.
But we don't know till the, that lady says.
And the problem with that though, sir, is that then they just pop them in another spot right within our city.
That's, it's one well at a time with all pressure. And, uh, they're, Railroad Commission has not been consistent on this need issue. They've in some cases ruled, uh, there's no showing of need for the facility. We're going to rule it out for that reason. And then a month later, rule in favor of an application in almost identical area. Where, and there couldn't be any need differentiation that's arisen in that one month of time period. But that's what we've seen from the Railroad Commission, so... You're correct that even if you beat this, it doesn't mean end of the thread. If you beat this well and they, they can't do it, it doesn't mean it won't happen again.
But we are, like, um, we will just continue, I guess, this, we should continue to work with the legislature, uh, Senator's Office on the legislation. So we'll just stay vigilant, I guess, and just keep...
Well, we'll take up the item as to whether or not we want to pass a resolution supporting the legislation, okay?
Because the city, yeah, I believe, if I'm not correct, gone, is that right? Y'all passed a resolution that they would actively protest this one that we're working on now as well as any others that are coming into the ETJ, is correct? That's what the explanation was.
Anybody else? We're done on that? Okay. Uh, three minutes.
No action.
No, okay. No minutes. Do we have a press report?
Can I fail to go back and correct my cover sheet? Did you lose yours?
No.
I get my, uh, changed my cover sheet on the date, so the one that I handed Carol, I will change.
The date, meaning?
Yeah, the day of the meeting. Yeah, it says April.
And with the balances aren't the same, right?
Yeah, but it just tells you the meeting on the 13th of May instead of the 30th of May. So the one that I have, I may go with. We're not picking, are we all?
No, right. Three, one.
Answer that.
No.
Do you have the old one? I'll answer the old one. Okay. You had it, the judge just got lost in a black hole. Correct.
It?
Uh, I gave it to you and it was in a folder, you know, just couldn't find it today, the day of the meeting.
Oh.
Yes.
Alright.
I, I, I had it. I gave it to...
I trust that you did.
And that's okay, we all make mistakes. She's learning just like everybody else does, she's fine.
It may have been me. It may have been me. Probably was.
Okay, well, you have to wait till next week because I'm leaving as soon as the meetings are over then. Okay, I'm gonna time you on that, 30 seconds.
I'm making a motion to be approved, approved in court.
Hold second. One, two, I have it.
And I'm leaving, uh, Sunday evening to be in Dallas for a couple of days for my investment officer. So I will be back on Thursday.
Thanks, Karen.
I'm timing you now.
Alright, next item is number eight. It should discuss, approve, disprove, county consider passing a resolution supporting legislation prohibiting placement of oil-filled waste disposal wells and facilities within the ETJ of the incorporated city. That's what we just discussed with Ms. Moy. Do we have any comments from the Commissioners claiming that...
This is just a resolution to send to the legislature?
Yeah, it'd be a resolution to send the legislature, pass along to Senator Debrini's office, to pass along to our legislative consultant lobbyist, whoever that guy is.
Maybe the city as well, the citizens as well?
Uh, well, it's kind of the cities. Yeah, whether they want to do it or not, but, uh, that's the, the concept. Everybody have a motion now?
I have a couple of comments.
Or discussion, okay?
Couple of comments, questions. Okay, how big is the city's ETJ? How is that defined? Are we telling, the office?
Yes, it's one half mile from D Point Corporate City.
One half mile?
Yeah.
Okay, are they all large cities the same as small cities?
No, despite your type of government, that's for a type A general law city, which is current city. It's a half mile. If we worked it over to a home rule charter, we'd have one mile.
Alright, I will make the, the comment that I intend to go to at least two legislative conferences, one in August and one in October this year. And I will talk to legislators or the people who I might influence with this that I will support if we keep this out. And then according to what resolution we pass, which passed that information on too, but I will be supporting it.
Now, the ETJs of the other incorporated cities within Orange, Orange County, the same half mile?
Correct.
Alright, there's no way that it happens. So we're not talking about huge areas down in the city limits in this case.
No, the, the conversation comes now because of the growth of the borders caused the opportunity for life spray annexation, which we just pushed over boundaries.
Right, you expand into your ETJ and then your ETJ pops out.
Yes, which is where we have our annexation authority. It is, albeit voluntary, but we, we have the right to go into the annexation procedure.
I presume that even if we passed a legislation like this or Railroad Commission were to change the regulations to comply with the request of the existing facilities to be grandfathered, they, they wouldn't be, I wouldn't think they're permissioned to operate through the front.
It'd be a difficult sell. Part of the problem too is these injection wells are just like such new area businesses. You can't do it out of my prohibition. Even within corporate city limits, there's a misunderstanding that we do have drilling ordinance. You can't preclude drilling, but you have the ability to infuse those restrictions that make it virtually impossible. So in our case, they can't be too effective a struggle. It's kind of hard to find a place in a corporate city limits that you would not be considering for some structure. So the oil company or the industry pretty much is just stay away from the city's front. And ETJs, a little different story. But, uh, for the most part, they have my prohibition, uh, presenting this opinion of this.
Uh, the special project person submitted me three questions and I provided Judge Butler a copy of it. One of the questions was, will the Railroad Commission be notified about the resolution to not allow the permit for itself water disposal well beside the ETJ? Another question was, will the resolution be adopted and recorded as proof to deny developments of this, uh, saltwater disposal, uh, inside the ETJ? And the third was, and this is all the cities, they need to, you know, need to request that all cities in Orange County report all new annexations or propose annexations to their city within an updated city map. People are, some people are sharing the information with that speed about the projects coming in, some do not. I guess what they're asking is that it'd be helpful to know so when we start doing the mapping and planning for emergency purposes or whatever the case may be, that we've got, we can start kind of planning ahead of, ahead of the ballgame. But, uh, a lot of the maps, I don't, you know, I don't know how accurate they really are anymore. It was obvious by the last map we had with, with the street there by, proposed, uh, corner store, that was when we built the Orange City, it was, nobody had one name for one street and somebody had a name for another street. So maybe some of these issues need to be addressed, we're all the same thing. Ellen, you have anything you want to add, or?
No, on that resolution, you got both on it? How does that affect my permitting?
I wouldn't think it would affect your permitting at all. I mean, here's the thing, if we simply pass a resolution saying, we want the legislature or the Railroad Commission or some combination, the state or Texas government, to not allow permitting of saltwater disposal wells or oil-filled waste disposal wells within these ETJs of cities. We're not doing anything that gets ourselves sued. If we were to attempt to legislate it ourselves, you know, we did pass an ordinance prohibiting, or purging to prohibit those things, we might be, well, you know, it's guaranteed somebody would bring suit against the county to contest that and with whatever grounds, constitutional rights, whatever it be. And we'd end up with a big legal challenge. And so maybe, it seems to me if we're in spirit, uh, opposed to this thing, we put in there the passage of resolution supporting legislation. At the statewide level, if we get that done, we'll probably be a pretty safe course following. It should not affect your permitting one bit. I can't imagine it would. And with Railroad Commission being notified, well, we can let them know, but it's, it won't have any effect on what they did. Uh, they're, they're gonna issue the permits or refuse the permits on the same basis they have been, unless the legislature acts, uh, to change the regulations or to change the statute. That's why I think we really...
I think at some point, the County Commissioners Court in County, Orange County needs to basically dig their heels in. And if it comes to a lawsuit, you know, we just have to fight that lawsuit. And we ain't gotta spend money, and we need to spend money because these saltwater disposal wells within the ETJ of any of our communities. At some point, you know, we're putting our communities at risk. And they do fracture and they do leak. And they get into the water supply of Orange City, or Kennedy, or Rungy, or Paul City, or anyplace else. We get, we got a massive problem. Then, you know, we're, now we have an emergency that we could have foreseen, you know, we didn't. If you do an ordinance, they want to sue us, sue us, we'll take it to court, fight it out about it, and then see who wins. But, you know, you do have obligations, and if it's gonna cost us money, we need to spend it.
I, I think, my general thought is that this is a statewide problem. It is, it's not just Orange County, Buffalo, and out in West Texas, everywhere else. And I think it'll have to be addressed on a statewide basis. I, 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 I think, but I think as a, as a threshold thing we can do, and I would recommend that the Commissioners Court do it, is go ahead and pass a resolution supporting legislative or legislative or changes at statewide level that would prevent this. We'll see what that does. And then if it, legislature and Railroad Commission just sit on their hands and not do anything, then we can take that again. But before we would, uh, taking any county action, I want to make sure that there's not specific case law out there prohibiting us from doing something like that. Is if we, if we do it and it's an ill-advised state step, we'll not only not be successful in doing it, we'll bear a bunch of legal fees fighting the issue. So I'm, I understand your position, I respect that, but I, my belief is that we should simply consider the resolution that's been requested on Ms. Moy and others at this point and see, uh, see if it has any effect. I suspect we won't be the only county in the Aiken Bridge that's encountering these same issues and feeling the same way. Of course, others out in the country that aren't in an ETJ that are getting these things put right next to them, and there are houses, they don't like it either. But, uh, I think it's a lot more supportable, a change in legislation is not more supportable when you're talking about putting it right next to Incorporated City for their water population centers. And, uh, and we can end up with bad insurance to cause problems if you have water supply, uh, public safety. Anybody?
I'll make the motion to approve item number eight.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I won't start, I won't make a comment. I think we need to develop a written resolution that when I go to the legislature, I can hand it to my legislature.
It will pretty much track what we just discussed. We'll prepare a written one then. I think all the Commissioners and the County Districts should have.
No, were you gonna say something?
I was just gonna say, I think, Judge, the policy's no apparel to the county and it's gonna come a little bit further. I was just going to say, I think Judge, the policy's no apparel to the county and it's going to come a little bit further in the process. We have, you've got the municipal law humping up against the regulatory law. And this will be the first step to really, from a municipal standpoint, of breaching the sacred cow status of the ETJ. Is as it is today, none of our ordinances apply in the ETJ. And, and whether we just do a drilling ordinance saying we want that, well, it's, from a municipal standpoint, they're going to say, the authority is what we're trying to develop into the ETJ. Is that if we're going to govern within our corporate city limits, we want the ability to govern within that ETJ. And then it'll open up us being able to draft an ordinance specific to this, just as y'all are, you know, supporting now. So, municipal government's got a clear hurdle of, like I said, removing that sacred cow status of the ETJ.
Well, I'm not actually, what I envision is happening here, but happens to all, it'd be either a regulatory change or the rural commission or the regulations are saved, they can't be granted within the ETJ of the incorporated city. And it won't be a few enforcement, it's a two rural commission enforcement, or a statutory change of some sort, where AG or somebody else will have authority to enforce it. I don't think it'll be a city enforcement or a county enforcement issue. If, if it goes far the way I would envision it moving forward, we'll see. But it's, it's an interesting question. Alright, let's go on to number nine. Now, the problem we have with going forward with number nine right now is, Zane and I went and met with the historical commission and the funding agreement includes an attachment that's an easement. The county had already granted the historical commission an easement, which basically is that we won't make any fundamental changes to the courthouse without permission from the historical society if we accept this grantment. They have made some change, they want, they want to have a new easement, that makes some modifications to that language. The AG's office was working on it and the guy said he'd have it to us within a few days, we still want to have it. We, Erica has attempted to contact the historical commission today to get the language far of that easement. We've been unsuccessful in getting it. My guess is the AG's office has given to Mr. County.
Really, you're coming, you can't doubt.
Yeah, but it, both of them, as you recall, that, that the agreement had the easement as an attachment. So, we can't really, without knowing what that new language is and the easement, I don't think we can really approve of yet as much as we'd like to perform with it. So, we'll just have to hold on to number nine and ten and put those on the next agenda. And hopefully, we will have, we will have it done by then. We'll have the documents handed over, review it, and voters tell us whether it's good or not. Does that make sense? Alright, so no action on nine and ten. Number eleven, does Zane here?
Yes.
Zane, here's what I've been hearing, and you'll have to comment on this if you have any comments, that you were having difficulties at times in getting supplies, maintenance supplies, is that correct? And the system has been in place up to this point in time where the auditor's office ordered all your supplies, is that right? And you had no authority to order supplies directly or replace orders of them.
Correct.
And I didn't know particular why that was set up that way, but that's the way it was going. And the problem was you run into logjam getting supplies. And according to Rosie I talked to, she said she'd run out of stuff some time. Get mop floors. I got a response to this from the auditor's office, the one I had to be out of town this afternoon and was unable to attend, but she asked me to share this. Have you all seen her response? Commissions?
No.
Alright. Says, "The purchasing for the county janitorial supplies has been handled by the county auditor's office. An inventory of basic supplies exists in the designated storage area allocated at 200 East Coward. Until this inventory is, is exhausted, is not prudent for any individual to order other supplies for county building maintenance. After the in-stock items have been depleted, if another individual is to order supplies for building maintenance that is necessary to the budget, such be checked before ordering is done. After the expenditures in today's payment cycle of fifteen hundred dollars, fifty, fifteen fifty, forty dollars, forty-one, six hundred fifty-five dollars, eighty-four cents for remaining fiscal years 2014 janitorial supply budget in four months remaining fiscal year, which is all the more reason to use the supplies on hand. As an aside, several of the items on hand were specific requests by the janitorial staff." Now, I don't know what supplies were on hand.
I'll give you a couple examples, in March we asked, some people know around here who ran out, we're running out of time. So, if we try to order stuff, tell them if you lose some. Well, we got hand soap in, but they got disposed, so that doesn't work any of the expenses. So, we could get back to them, said this is not going to work, we direct them. So, to this day, we haven't seen them. Right now, they'll give them like the disposable or the pump things. We've been actively cutting them off in Sweden and cleanouts, and there's the fact that it's so cheap. So, I mean, we're, we're by the ways of that too.
How, how did we get to the point where we're so low? Apparently, there's only six hundred fifty bucks left in the budget.
I cannot tell you that because I don't have no control over what's scheduled. You have to decide in my league.
Or is there more?
I like to bring up one other thing. Love that auditor's office, really, you know, you order stuff and you don't worry. It's kind of petty. But here, about a month ago, we had to bring our folks here. And when I went to talk to them, shit, after all their talks, I was going to make an appointment. So, let me explain to you what I was asking for. So, I couldn't account myself, like I helped with the road bridge, setting up an account with Quill, just to roll the vacuum cleaner and vacuum the place. I just, we shouldn't have to go through stuff like that. I shouldn't have to make an appointment without, we need something.
Commissioner John, questions like this?
Just a, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
It's just, I just told you something Lawana said, and then I was trying to defend or take sides or anything. But basically, it's, it's a control of the expenses to make sure that not all of us are ordering the same stuff and we have all these supplies and we order bulk, sometimes it's cheaper. And I know that Zane specifically has told us, we've got the new floors, we asked, okay, how do we clean them? Because we want to make sure we didn't put something on that you shouldn't be cleaning them with. And I think he will sit, Punsol.
Or Mr. Clean.
Or Mr. Clean. No, he told us to do something, but he just used.
Only, only Mr. Clean.
So, Mr. Clean, okay. Not to use any other stuff, it's the braces. And I think that's all Michelle had ordered, because that's what he wanted. So, but I invited you all to be commissioners to go into the supply room. And there's probably plenty of supplies that he has requested, because I don't think Michelle orders anything in the place that's been requested. There's stuff in there, and you just need to go see what's in there and use what we have. And there's probably the containers of the hand soap, the ventilators that we use in our restrooms too, stuff like that. Clean supplies, deskly supplies, testers, bleach, Mr. Clean.
Or if the, I'm sorry, if the supplies are in there.
I cannot tell you, but we've already requested the hand soap about four times, certainly.
How long has it been since you've been cutting out and making do with what you have?
It's a while since about the first day. Sorry, I got about four more to go, the disposal will bring back and cut, and we'll be out of that.
For two months?
But she had gotten us something totally different. And it won't work in this, well, that hit me just then, either way. It worked either way. But it doesn't work. It's not what's been used here since, it's suspended stuff. And I know Road Bridge often orders their janitorial supplies, and obviously, I have to pick up Quill or maybe the facility then.
What buildings are yours from?
Pretty much.
Just this?
Pretty much, just looking.
Okay, and the other?
Pretty much everybody takes care of their stuff.
All the other county buildings, like, my old building is taken care of by?
Ourselves, you know. Joe, this Rose refuses to come in and clean our building, and that's the truth. Joe comes in, it's been assigned to come in three days a week to clean and picks up the trash and moths and brings the rest.
And where does he get his supplies?
From, from Michelle, he goes to Michelle's office and asks for it.
Correct.
Mr. Wilson, you have a question?
I'm just curious as to how the auditor got into this. The auditor does not answer, I don't, does not answer to the commissioners court. The auditor answers to district courts.
Well, it's, well, then somebody has to take, control order supplies. And that's just, if, like, if somebody has to do payroll, county treasurers, my poor duties do not have anything to do with payroll, but that's where it falls. So, it has to fall on some off, so it's, you know.
The auditor's work for the district judges, they appoint them, they set their salary.
Right, I understand, somebody has to.
How are you going to have them reporting to you?
Zane, you have a courthouse maintenance budget, correct?
Yes, there should be a courthouse maintenance budget, yes.
Is there a, is there a supply budget within that budget?
Sir, can I have that part of it?
He should be in charge.
Is there a supply budget within that budget? Supply line out?
Yes, there should be, cleaning supplies.
Bill goes, oh, it's all the way back.
Do you have a place, if you ordered your own stuff, do you have a place to store it?
Right. These are all our, they're all stored in outside.
What about, what cleaning supplies you would need?
Just don't need that much, and you already don't even need that much storage, but you call Quill and they're like, one or two days, you got it. It's, it's, it feels like the vacuum's there. I called them, and very next day, we had a new vacuum cleaner delivered, so. It's not really a matter of.
You order it as bulk, it's cheaper.
It's true.
And that's what it is. So, then August, Michelle sends out a list to everybody, okay, tell me what you need coming next fiscal year. And we all give her our list, so she can order paper and bulk. I mean, she gets online and requests quotes, it's done cleaning supplies, paper, whatever you need. We try to do it all at once.
I understand trying to do that, and I think that's a good idea, and I think you ought to continue that. But the, the other problem is just meeting day-to-day needs that are for supplies that are not. There are inadequate stocks of them, you know, and I don't know that anyone can tell you, well, next year I need six hundred packs of hand towels. I mean, I, I don't know, I know I come out here and every day I walk in, there's about fifty claymen sitting out there. They're all using restrooms and washing their hands.
Yeah, it varies by court days and everything.
You know, and it varies from day to day, some days are court days or something. And I assume that the usage of these materials has escalated greatly in the last year or so. But it seems to me we've got two problems here. One is, it looks like the budget was inept, but there's, if there's any way you're going to get through six hundred fifty-five dollars for the rest of the remaining four months of this budget, so I don't know how you do it.
Last time I seen it, it was on budget, what, a week or so, each sold me the balance and that wasn't that much. So, I don't know.
Well, I think because the six hundred dollar vacuum cleaner that you ordered, Quill getting out of your line of.
Right.
Yep. I'm sure that's true, but, you know, we do have to have vacuum cleaners around also.
I mean, that's just, I would like to give, honestly, most, I know she orders, I don't know if she, she orders from, I don't care. But I know it would be nice to get to a more commercial line of products and things, though. And I have to talk to Queen Park vendors on suggesting a location to use them. They're really not that much more expensive than going to Walmart and buying Mr. Clean or whatever, some of the products. Outside of most of your paper products, you really don't have that much expense for a lot.
Well.
You got a cleaner, almost as much as a model.
If this decision was made to bring the products over here and let y'all control the products, do y'all have a supply bring?
Yeah, we have the supplies in ready. I mean, you have enough space for what's supposed to be.
Who would be purchasing these products?
I just send out your Quill, I mean, it seems like Road Bridge would, I don't know. To me, I guess it kind of turns out it's a whole thing, doesn't it, that you order from the same company? You order from the same company, it doesn't matter from a, they can fix it, which we've been.
And some of the stuff that she requested, she goes to Walmart and gets.
Yes. Does that apply to all the others? Same way with us, we, we have to do the same thing to Jill and all that. I mean, to me, if we're using a certain supplier on this stuff, all of it applies.
Why don't y'all?
Ordered one vacuum cleaner.
Why don't y'all check?
Two hundred dollars.
Texas Correctional Industries makes products for cleaning, makes fly a lot of counties, a lot of cities, a lot of, they supply all state facilities with cleaning products.
Right.
And you can order it bulk, and, you know, it comes in a barrel, it comes in ten, twenty-five gallon containers, whatever you want to do, and you can utilize that. But you need to make, I think this way we should do it, make a list of what, what supplies you're going to need, come up with it, you know, get you a list of maximum inventory and minimum inventory. You have your place to stay here.
Right.
And you receive all the supplies for all, for all the, the buildings here, and then disperse them as they go. I don't know, but there's going to, we can talk this to death.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's kind of petty.
And part of Zane's problem, my problem is, he came in October, and that led us that we deal with in August.
Right, yes.
He's kind of going by gestimate of the last person that was in charge of whatever supplies they would need. So, his, you know, his defense, he had to deal with whatever was given to him.
Yeah.
But come August, he's going to get that.
I'm learning whatever my needs and putting the budgets, everything, so.
She's, you know, come August, he can handle it.
I am rough on all this, too, so.
Alright, I'll, I'll make a few comments. Then order through the auditor's office, of course, Orange County, a small operation, a small county, and they could do it, they needed someone to do it. We have a couple custodians around here, the county's office, I mean, the auditor's office, so it's still ordered through that. I've gone through the budget with them the last two years, and said, do we have enough for supplies? Well, we need to adjust it a little bit, we adjusted whatever. They want to show on her books that needed to be adjusted. So, maybe we didn't adjust enough for this year. Although it's, vacuum cleaner came out of it, that's a big map out there, just a surprise. Alright, so, Zane is in charge of maintenance, he's doing a whole lot of fires, he's doing a whole lot of construction fires that we can't get contractors to do, just hard to hire a contractor, and he's taking care of that. He's working with Road and Bridge, using their personnel to help him get this done. He's doing some work for them, they're working together. And I think he should be given the authority to order the supplies that he decides he needs. Although, if he has supplies there, he needs to get them from the auditor's office and put them in this building out here and use what he can. Get those supplies and put them here, somebody has them, he can get them and use them. Use them up before you order some more.
But you won't be completely depleting, you know, the language, when you're indicating they have to deplete, in dirt pace, I know that there ain't yet to run out before you order anything new, you know, you don't want to do that, but.
But he needs to come and look at what they have to fly.
He does, absolutely.
I will say that, I've come to several times with Michelle, say, well, I need some of this, so I know that goes to the sheriff's department. And this goes to this department, I'm like, okay, what can, what can we get, what can I take, okay? That's what it pulls down to.
So, in the time that you've gone over there, you haven't came back with anything?
A few times, yeah, early on, here lately, no.
You haven't came back with anything at all?
And a lot of times I've sent Joe, Joe's back and forth, so he picks up what he can, like audit paper, trash bags and stuff like that, I think we're good on all that stuff. It's just real minor stuff.
We have a motion by Commissioner Yauer that the maintenance department be allowed to order its own materials? Do I have a second on that? What?
Agenda.
Says, "Discuss, approve, disapprove, authorizing maintenance measures, Zane agrees to order supplies needed for county building maintenance."
That's pretty clear.
That's what he's, that's motion, and that's the second, alright, is that a vote, all in favor?
I'm going to, I'm going to vote aye on it, the aye on it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote aye on it. The only thing I'm gonna ask is, the funds that are left are like six hundred and what, fifty-one dollars? Is he gonna be able to pull out of there, or that's depleted, or is he gonna give the rest from what he's gonna need?
I gotta, I gotta go over there and talk to Michelle, see what in that store the, that was.
Did you?
It was inside of this stuff.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but if we, if we goes over there and get, get what you need, we have six hundred dollars.
She said belongs to this building.
If those funds, where are we gonna go from there?
I guess the general.
But we're gonna go to another line item, roll color items, nothing else. And I don't mind, I mean, I'm gonna vote aye on it, but.
I got a lot of money left in other lines, but, you know, I have to work with Pete on what I can take from where.
As you said.
Did an auditor, they did notify the auditor.
Pete, if we have another line item, we can put it, that we don't have to amend the budget, then I'll find.
I'm really watching live stuff right now, about air conditioning repairs and everything, and what all's going.
Yes, sir.
This is why you asked.
One, I understand, it's your bottom line. As long as you don't go over your bottom line on your budget, you're all right. So if you have thirty thousand dollars and you need to spend more on one, maybe try not to.
Right, I understand.
Get that bottom line that you stick in your budget.
Like I said, I'm still trying to learn everything on that, that budget way, I think I'm going through.
I don't know, unfortunately, but it figures from the misses we got from the one, that this lister guns are kind of impressive and wasting materials. I haven't heard anybody suggest that that's happened. That the amount budgeted for maintenance of this building was totally inept. I don't think anybody's suggesting, well, we're running, we're running out of quarters, dirty, people can't wash their hands, or whatever, you know, and wash your hands. I don't think anybody's suggesting we do that, so we'll have to, if there's not money available in the general maintenance budget to pay those supplies, we'll have to consider something, some other way to get the, uh, get approved. We might have to test, uh, test the emergency budget need. If you're in the bathroom and it's hooked off, that's why.
I just have a question, though. He's talking about supplies for this building.
Right.
Why is when you go to her and say you need something for this building, but she said, no, it belongs to this sheriff? Is that all mixed together in one building?
That's all.
Pretty much is.
Really, don't feel like it's your answer, I, I guess, basically, it's something that auditor calls the sheriff's.
Well, it really is. If you're buying supplies for this building, I mean, you need your own place to store the supplies for this building. You're not going to dump it.
Right.
That's my question.
Well, I'm not sure I understand the system that's been in place. And I'm not sure Zane does either, but we, we need some coordination.
Well, in, in, in defense of either Pete or the auditor's office, nobody's been, in county like I have been, that monitors day by day what's going on. And that could cause a lot of disorder.
Let's try to have improved communications with the auditor regarding the supplies around here. I don't want you to order stuff that you don't need.
No.
And, uh, and we're gonna have to address both of your shortfalls, if there is one. Uh, but I think the first thing that has to happen is, you have to communicate with the auditor's department, see what is there that is available to you, so you can know. And is, you know, if you pick up a bunch of soap, hurt towels, and say, okay, I'd like to check it out for this, this'll last for extra example, then that's what you do. But I think you need to prepare an inventory of your needs and start figuring out, what am I, what am I using based on a monthly basis?
Right.
And so you can, and then find out from the auditor's office, here's what's here that's available to you, so you'll know.
Yeah, well, I think we've been in accord with what we've used since we, since I've started, so.
All right.
I'm pretty well aware now.
Very good, thank you. Okay. Mr. White, any here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, club is the, uh. Oh, okay, pardon me, you're right. We're well, uh, as you will all recall from our last meeting, there's a computer that was brought here to go with the fancy audio visual thing to go order. The computer's here, uh, we discussed, I think, the last meeting, having that available to be assigned to the county department that needs a computer. And I think what we have is a request, it'd be assigned to the maintenance department, that you have access to one right now, would like to have one of those. That's the request, is it correct? I understand that. Do I have a motion? Can we approve the assignment, do we dispute this on the audio video system, cook this Zane agrees?
I'll second this.
All in favor? Fourteen, discuss approved, pardon me, thirteen, discuss approved, disapproved, request for qualification for general engineering services. A four-month contract with automatic one-year renewal. Was it?
Yeah, what I have here is, I'm looking at general contracting throughout the whole county, and that goes everywhere. And each section will pull out of their own line item, go to the favor, we just, we need some type of, of engineering around. I know I need it, but I don't need it all the time, but I don't want nothing that's gonna be, we'll say, the new jailhouse, we pulled out Roden Bridge, Roden Bridge budget. So if jailhouse needs it, they need some engineering done, they'll have a line item, they can use him too, he'd be universal. I don't want nothing, nobody that's gonna be tied just to really clear it.
You're talking about getting Roden Bridge hiring an engineering firm or general engineering services. Four-month contract with automatic one-year renewal, for how much money? Based on an hourly basis?
We're, we're looking at, I've got, I was looking at a road bridge park, put about a hundred thousand dollars in.
Doesn't that have to be submitted to bids?
Yes, sir. It's gotta go in the newspaper, it's gotta go, I've got the letter, it'll be sent up. Once we get it approved to do it, it's gonna be submitted to the paper, it'll be out for bids, and it'll be for services. And the type of services I'm looking, it's gonna be like drainage, you're gonna go to HOX culverts, you got three-party contracting. You know, I've got seal coat contract coming through. You need to get in there, make sure everybody's there, the quantities, everything there. Uh, the GIS, you know, we're gonna start GIS, I'm sure for soon, uh, doing the hydraulics, you know, and how much water is actually running in a certain area? What actually, and HOX code's gonna work, if we've got it on the bridge. We've got all these little obstacles that we're gonna look at, now that's just on the road bridge.
Shouldn't we just let you put that in your budget and not, why do we need to pass it up here? That should be in your budget on a line item.
Well, I have nice business, and then we could, wow, 'cause I even had to take, I said, well, I could use you for this. And he said the contract that he signed here was for seventeen forty-seven.
Right. Um, Mike asked about the contract that I already have with the county, and that's strictly for the TIP grant program. We don't wanna mix funds, so what he started talking about needing otherwise outside of that, things you mentioned just now. And I said, well, Mike, that sounds like it's gonna be in excess of fifty thousand dollars, which is the procurement. So if you're going to contemplate a contract that would exceed that amount, you're required to select an engineering firm, uh, for that instance. And I think that's where he's heading with this.
Is there money in your budget remaining for this fiscal year paid for?
Yes, sir, I got twenty-eight thousand set up into seventeen forty-seven that.
But that's different. He said seventeen forty-seven, for these engineering services you're talking about here, is there money in your budget paid for fifty thousand dollar plus contract?
Well, what I was looking at, if I could get it started, each line item would get pulled back. If I need road work, I can get it out of the road material line item. If I need, uh, signing, say, we've got to worry about signing in an area, Chevron, curtsied, do your bulk bank or whatever, we could pull that out of the sign line item. And that would be paying for it as it goes.
But, but is there, I, I guess my question is this, your budget for this year remaining four months is already fixed.
Yeah.
And, uh, you're not asking, or, the, the projects that you're going to undertake before the next fiscal year again, so to win your new budget?
Right.
The projects you're gonna take this year, that you're saying you could use these services, I assume that includes like the Estambito?
Right, well, that, that one there would come out of the bridge line item. We have a line item, just a bridge.
Right, well, well, I guess the question is, is there money enough in, uh, your budget for these particular things that you're going to undertake for the end of the year to pay for this?
For the next, yes, in the next, uh, budget, I set money aside in road materials and stuff where I could pay them out of that line item. Because not every day I wanna need drainage.
You just, you do it just for a project?
Yeah, kind of for a project.
Is, is it not possible to simply contract with an engineer on projects that do need engineering?
Yeah, well, that's why I was gonna be, projects that don't need it, I don't, it, you know, you might need them five times a year.
I, I guess I'm trying to understand the reason why you need to sign a four-month, uh, with one-year automatic renewal contract that one engineering company provides you services you don't know when you're gonna need it and why.
Okay, well, the, the, the reasoning, I got this one set up right now for four months, I got a million dollars that I will get. And I got five hundred thousand in, in the special road bridge, and what I wanna do is a seal coat program. Because I got a lot of these roads, these paper roads that are falling apart. But I've gotta get everything set up, I've gotta get the quantities, I've gotta get everything done, I've gotta go through the bidding process. And you only got so much for so long, and then once the pavement gets cold, that's it, you can't shoot. So my project right now is getting somebody on board so I can get this moving, so I can get the roads sealed in which we. Got a lot of roads that better hurry up and get some kind of attention to be going for a fair amount. And all it is, is a single course.
I don't doubt that a bit. I'm just trying to understand the need for this particular contract.
So we have in the budget, in road bridge budget, there's engineering services, and I believe it's nationally. But with my understanding, that was just for engineering services, 'cause seventeen forty-seven would come out of seventeen forty-seven funds.
See, I wasn't here during all that.
Seventeen forty-seven funds, anything, any engineering services for seventeen forty-seven would come out of seventeen forty-seven funds.
Right.
After, after the project is, after the contract is, I mean, after the, the, the award or the monies and all that, and it's, then it would, this amazed, we'd be getting their money for any engineering studies they did for that. You're, you're, you're outside of seventeen forty-seven. So to me, the monies that's in seventeen forty, I mean, that's in your budget now for engineering services would cover that.
That would be great, but, you know, I'm only going by, I wasn't here during it, I inherited this budget.
Yeah, but to me, that's the way, that's the way I, yeah, that's the way I understand. Those monies aren't, I mean, unless.
Because I got twenty.
Because you can't, yeah, seventeen forty-seven has to have their own budget by itself.
Yeah.
The way I understand.
And see, that's how it was set up, the way I understand it, too.
And so whenever seventeen forty-seven funds come available, that's when we pay for seventeen forty-seven engineering. We'll have to pay at first, then submit the reimbursement.
Right.
But the money, I think it's a hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand, whatever it is, to me, that's monies for, you could, to me, is with being for funds that are available for your engineering project at this time to do your roads or bridge or right-of-ways or any GIS work or anything.
You see, I got twenty-eight thousand dollars, and I'm there, I'd love to use it if I could. I'm just only going off of what David was here, 'cause I wasn't here.
You got twenty thousand left in the engineering?
Yes, sir. So this was the last paperwork I got from the treasurer's office.
Office.
I've been, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So you don't.
But that, the.
Do you have money in engineering?
Yes.
You're here to ask if you can run the request for engine services on newspaper, to hire an engineer?
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll say this, you ask for general engineer, I don't think we should hire a general engineer to do road work. We ought to have one for road work and one for other engineering. If we need to change an air conditioning system in this building, we need a different engineer, we wouldn't need the same engineer.
Yeah, well, engineering services, it's, you could use it if you want, I mean, I build this for road bridge, but yeah, you wanna do it for road bridge, don't you? I find this, I, I just don't wanna be tied down.
Well, you're saying for general engineering services, just four-month contract with the automatic one-year renewal. But you would be, if you're gonna have a contract, you're gonna have one engineering firm, I think we need different engineers, I don't think it's gonna be like what I'm saying.
You just, you just give you some flexibility to, to hire for general engineering services in the office. It's something my firm, if I was selected, was not comfortable with, and tell you, and you need to go through another selection process, for that.
Mike, you're trying to set up an engineer, we're talking, call, pick up the phone and call one, that's what you're trying to set up here.
Yes, sir. Well, if it's gonna be more than fifty thousand dollars worth of work, so it's an indebted quantity contract, which is I think what we're talking about. And it would allow you to go beyond fifty thousand under one selection process, so that you're not continually trying to select engineering firms for smaller prices.
Well, I don't know, are you going to have any specific projects, not counting seventeen forty-seven, where you're gonna be incurring engineering fees over fifty thousand dollars?
Well, we've got three thirty-one that we're trying to get Tech Spot on to extend that culvert, through all these trucks that keep slipping over. We've gotta get them to extend the culvert, that's the one, we have that eight percent grade, we're gonna have to raise that grade to where it's not such a hard pull, those trucks get on seventy-two. Once Tech Spot does their part, then we're gonna come in and do our part.
Do you think that'll exceed fifty thousand dollar of engineering?
Well, we don't exactly know what's gonna consist of. Right, because it's gonna go, if it goes over.
Or do you submit a request for engineering services each month not to allow X number of dollars per month? When they get to that amount, it would cut off or something like that? I'm just asking.
Okay, well, well, the, the only thing that makes it a little different on there, uh, and I'll give you a quick scenario. Uh, say we're doing the three thirty-one job, and then all of a sudden I have to get, well, we've got the San Antonio River Bridge on three twenty-six, that's Washington Way. That one there, right off the bat, that's over a hundred thousand dollars that was submitted on bid work, and that has to go out for bid. Well, before I can go out for bid, I have to have the specs, that you gotta know what you're actually gonna do to it, instead of just letting Joe Company come in there and just start doing whatever they want to. And then it's gonna be a he says she's there, man, and that's what I'm trying to avoid. I want an engineering firm to come and say, this is the specs that we need, and this is what it's gonna do. Well, we gotta pay for them to design the specs, and each scenario is different. And, and if it goes over, let's say fifty thousand dollars, here we are, we're stuck.
If you only have twenty-eight thousand dollars in your budget for an engineer, how would you deem that to be an emergency and amend your budget?
No, we're not, we're not.
No, but if you're, you only have twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight thousand dollars you can spend, and if you have to go over, then you gotta.
No, for the next four months, I got twen, no, next four months, I got twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Right.
About it. I have in next year's budget, I already assessed money in it for that.
So you're trying to find somebody.
I'm just trying.
And then I'm more than twenty-eight thousand, and they come over first.
Exactly.
Spend or whatever.
Right, and if it's set up the way it was, well, then I can just base it, then I'm done.
And so like, if this building needed work of some engineering part, this building would have a line item for engineering specifically?
If they wanted to.
Just what Zane, it seems to me, um, mistaken, seems to me like you don't really need a, any kind of action by the management's court to use engineering services to spend that twenty-eight thousand dollars?
No, 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 not for the forty-eight.
All right, well, I think next year, when, when you're putting together your budget proposal for next year. All right, well, I think next year, when you're putting together your budget proposal for next year, you probably will have to, if you still think it's a good idea to need to submit for bids and get bids on engineering services on a long-term general engineering contract, I can have somebody stand by basis and all that. I think you put, I don't know how you budget it exactly, because you don't know how much it's going to be. You'll have to, but you're going to have to project what kind of projects are going to fall in here, and how much I think it would need in engineering services on any of those projects, that's how you set your budget for next year. So I think that's when that, this issue is going to come up, not now.
Let's see, I was going off of David's saying on the contract, you should strictly set it to forty-seven, and so like that.
And, but you can enter into agreements with the engineering firm. If it's less than fifty thousand dollars for projects, you have the rest of this year. Well, understand that there's only twenty-eight thousand dollars for you to spend on engineers.
The only thing that I didn't want to jeopardize is seventeen forty-seven, because I don't know what Tech Stop's going to do if we turn around and start taking that money. I don't know, this is all before me.
Something happens specifically, it comes up that wires used, immediately engage an engineer in a contract over fifty thousand dollars, and it's going to jeopardize seventeen forty-seven, or something like that, come to us with proof of that. And evidence that there does, there is an emergency or something like that, and existence just allows you to make the budget. But right now, it looks to me like you've got your twenty-eight thousand dollars, you can spend it on engineers, and you're a discretion, and get your work done.
That's good.
Okay?
That's all I know. I can spend that twenty-eight thousand on.
I can say that we will have one, the walking, the walking across the bridge. Someday, someone's going to drive across, make some collapse, and we're going to have a big engineering expense there to put the bridge across Central Creek. There is one that's going to happen someday. It's pretty bad shape right now, you agree with that one?
Well, I suspect there are several places in the county roads that absolutely need attention, need engineering. And it'll be your responsibility to get, get it present and to put that into your budget for next year. Which, and you're going to have to estimate your engineering expenses, you have to. So I don't want you to just say I'm not going to need any, we know that you will. But you're going to need it, and you're going to need plan for it in next year's budget.
Reset aside one point five million dollars for seventeen forty-seven. So if we need to move some of that around, I think we can still do that, because we're not going to hit the full fifteen billion like before we thought.
Well, it depends on lots of.
But we only have four more months to go, we've got to make enough budget anyway. So I think we'll have plenty of time to still do that if we need to.
Well, because we're just using ten percent of that, seven point six million or eight point six million. It's not that.
Maurice, you have a specific question?
If you've got money in your budget for repair that bridge, right?
Yes, that's the next line.
Right, okay, we're going to get.
We're on the general services.
That's a different bridge, I think.
It's going to general services.
We can go to the next.
We can go to that.
If you've got money, you need to make this decision on that.
All right, number fourteen, discuss, approve, disapprove, discard of the Estambito Creek Bridge widening project and use a Masons engineer to design the bridge extension. Explain that.
What road?
What road?
Three twenty-six.
Three twenty-six.
We're on three twenty-six.
Maybe point three seven. This is the second bridge, not the San Antonio bridge.
No, it's just.
This is the official bridge.
He's going to call two hundred twenty-six thousand dollars in line, that's great.
Yes, sir. What it was is, seventeen forty-seven is on three twenty-six, that's one of our roads. And we need to widen that bridge, because it's only twenty feet.
The one down there that you just fixed is fourteen foot.
Yep, yeah, all we did was put it over there because of that.
Why don't we widen that one?
Oh, I'd love to define, have the money.
I think we should widen it before we should widen that one.
Well.
I don't have a cross there, it's a deal, I crossed it. You know how many bricks we won't have on that bridge?
Yeah, well, see seventeen forty-seven goes from seven ninety-two to the San Antonio River Bridge.
I understand that, and that's what I don't like, because that road used to be paved, and the other commissioners down the road, they destroyed it. Turned it back to dirt, and I want them to come on my side and pay my side.
Pay your side.
Yeah.
That's Masons, that's part of seventeen forty-seven.
Two twenty-six.
Keep telling.
This is seventeen forty-seven.
He's telling me that he's got money in Bridge Count to repair bridges, and seventeen forty-seven is not used for that.
No, what I'm here for is, we don't have the seventeen forty-seven approved. But I want to get the plan started. So we'd be ready, as soon as we got the money, we could go, instead of having to sit there and wait for the plans to be designed.
I think it'd be smart though to get another bid.
So. But here's why we went with this one, because he's already in the.
But he's already been paid.
So, and then, this is what we're up against.
But this is, this is what he thinks that the.
Contracts of that Archiflo, the extension on the bridge and everything.
Now, this is what the contractor is going to do.
That is the engineer's estimate. Contractor could go up and down.
Well, we should get the contractor to give us that.
Well, you got to design it first, so the contractor knows what to bid on it. That's what we're doing here. All we want him to do is design it. And then, once it's designed, then we'll take it, and we'll set it out for bids. But that's what I was saying, we've got to have specs, we've got to know, you know, that this bridge is being built according to the federal state guidelines and.
Right, you have money in the budget?
Yes, I have money in the budget to actually do this bridge. But what I'm looking at is just the approval and get started on it, because it's going to be close to fifty thousand dollars, and I'd say, well, I better come up here.
Fifty thousand dollars in professional services, that's for engineering, testing material, things like that. And then, an estimated hundred seventy-seven billion, that could do it. And you're saying this money is already in your budget?
I have two hundred in it. I've got five hundred thousand in my bridge budget. This road and the bridge.
It's a regular budget, isn't it? And the line item in the budget for five hundred thousand.
Yeah, and what I want to do is take fifty thousand dollars out of that and start the plans on this one. Just to get the plan started on the bridge.
Well, the plans, then requires professional services of just under fifty thousand dollars, correct?
Right.
And so it wouldn't have to be at the bid.
I think always wanting is go ahead, so he didn't get cut, say that, he didn't tell us.
Yes.
I make motion to approve out of fourteen and fifteen.
Second.
One third.
It's twenty feet right now, and we want to get to thirty.
It's going to be thirty foot wide?
Yeah.
They're working on five.
There's a wiggle in the road as you come up to the bridge, and it's already been hit, and the side rails.
Have you seen the bridge on the clay, you know, all those, it's cracked, because people hit them and run off.
But they're on three mark, they're putting them up on the mark.
And we keep putting them up, and that's doing it. Yeah, the other thing?
Yes.
Yeah, they've got lights and rims and tires, and all kinds of stuff on there. It's not there anymore, because the water washed it down.
Number fifteen, all right, I think you're done?
I'm done.
I've got all the signs.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Discuss, approve, disapprove, Matthew Pittman is a reserve deputy. Author for Constable Hunt, present to, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Judge.
Good afternoon.
Sir, I'm here to get approval to appoint Matthew Pittman as a reserve deputy constable, which is an unpaid position.
Is he a certified pays officer?
Yes, yes, he was just previously employed with the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, unpaid, you won't get paid by the county?
No.
Okay, were you asking to assist you?
Yes, yes, I was going to assist me, finding help with papers, or if I'm actually out of town or something, and the judge has town-sensitive papers that could be served, I'd like him to help me do stuff like that.
I think he's fine also, I can't vote. I'll make the motion.
One favor.
Thanks, sir.
And Susanna, there are a series of questions regarding this question, this land proposal. Current OEM budget contains five thousand dollars laptop, air card, printer. The agenda item is not indicated total price. Will the price be within this, this five thousand dollar budget?
Yes, the price is twenty-seven hundred, and I have an invoice here that I turned in when I submitted the agenda item.
Okay. Do you, your card dealing with your hotspot?
The hotspot is with AT&amp;T. Right, currently, we were with AT&amp;T, well, pardon. We, I mean, we're going together, currently, we have phone service through AT&amp;T, and we have current service through AT&amp;T. My understanding is we're going to be changing services.
We're currently have to provide.
I wouldn't recommend Verizon, that's just my opinion.
We're in the process of switching AT&amp;T.
Yeah, so I'm. I have a bomb card from here.
Verizon. Verizon doesn't cover that, the county on here, or so. The ones who go in contract to switch AT&amp;T.
Okay, so yes, you all want to switch AT&amp;T, and that's who you're proposing to.
Yes, sir.
And the keyboard, the Logitech keyboard or a Microsoft keyboard?
Yes, that's what was recommended by Jeff.
Will it dock with the computer?
From what I understand, it doesn't dock, it's.
I could do a Bluetooth. Because why, Logitech, I mean, the Microsoft makes the keyboard, they can, you just flick it to it.
Yes, sir, it has a protective case to protect it. I was concerned about it being too fragile for moving in and out and going to different places, and so I wanted to have the protective case. But the protective case doesn't allow the keyboard to attach, so that's why the Logitech Bluetooth.
I make motion to approve out of sixteen and fifteen.
I'll send it.
One favor.
Hi.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Soon as he leaves the way out. All right.
Me and Susanna will be purchasing the same, the same Microsoft Surface, and I just attached some things to yours of why I needed the Surface to be with me at all times. I use ArcGIS to do my address thing, the address information. And the top one is a Google Earth, I use both Google Earth and ArcGIS map. I'm trying to get the, the aerial we use now is outdated, it is back from two thousand and six, as I understand it. So it's very outdated, this is what I'm using here. So I use Arc, Google Earth to check my coordinates. And like this guy here, we're trying to do an oil site, this is what our map looks like now. When I went out there to do the addressing, there was a gate out there, looked like a home gate, didn't have an address board. So I'll have to go back to the office, get on my phone, make contact, if I had my computer with me, I could do all this while I'm at the site.
Good.
Second is, another example is, I work with people to get out of the floodplain, and the contractors who are helping building, so I have it on site with me again. I can do it all there with moving coordinates out of the floodplain.
You do a lot of on-site work?
Mm-hmm, yes, so it'll just be beneficial if I had a laptop with me.
Let me ask you one last question, okay? The budget for that department does not have funds for computer purchase, but fifty-seven eighty-five oh one remains in the budget of funds for the plotter. Will those be the monies utilized for this purchase?
Yes.
Okay. Will this farm also require hotspot and wireless access, is that included in the quote in twenty-seven hundred?
No, that is actually going to be budgeted out of our cell phone, that is a budget line in my budget for the cell phone. And that includes the hotspot, I have, there's money there.
Okay.
For the cell phone and the hotspot.
Your cell phone is going to be your hotspot, is it?
Yes, it will be.
Any questions?
I make motion to approve out of seventeen fifteen.
Second. One favor.
All right.
Okay. Acknowledgement on record that the nine-one-one coordinator will attend the class Arc GIS one. Introduction to GIS on June sixteen through June seventeen, two thousand and fourteen. Cost of attendance is a thousand ten dollars, and that has been budgeted, is that correct? Ready to leave your hotel, Mickey?
No, I've already gotten back before.
Okay, done. Attorney in person joining, best resolution. In favor of legislation, McGee, Attorney General opinion, W eight seven. There were comments from the audience about this, a lot, Maurice said something about that.
Yes, sir. W eight seventy, Attorney General opinion, written nineteen sixty-three, gave out favor to county. Basically, put it down into a very simple translation, pre-page opinion. The county roads are favorite county at the time. They, all the oil revenues as we do today, the coaches of state, that are assessed against the county road. Baker County filed basically a suit against the state, went to the Attorney General for an opinion, and basically it says that the state, if they own the road and are collecting revenues, then they have a responsibility to maintain those roads. Now, this thing has kind of died back in nineteen sixty-three, it's never been challenged, it's never been overturned. I would recommend that you support the county judge in approving this thing, because if they can get that overturned by the legislation, that means that all the oil revenue that we're not, that's under the county roads in Cowards County, and the White County, any other county, would come to the county rather automatically going.
To the state.
To the state. So I would recommend the opinion is quite lengthy and legally, that's the sum.
The honor has been, please, before you put the legislature on notice, please, coming back to the. Yep, he wants, he wants the money to go to the counties that are leasing uh, these, uh, these roadways, so some are going to the state to be allocated to places where there are more budgets, which is what's happening.
That's right.
And, uh, so.
Because you can look at maybe Carrench County, by itself, they have a thousand acres of roads that, you know, it's that little narrow bit.
Well, he, he cited.
I'm sure.
That, uh, Carrench County roadway income, which included bonuses, royalties, et cetera, from January eleventh through April two thousand and fourteen was seven and a half million dollars. Uh, D. Wett was eight point seven million dollars. And, you know, tremendous amount of money has just gone to the state for use that doesn't benefit us. We generate the income, they get the money.
What period of time is that for?
That was from eleven through, this period of time, fourteen.
It's not a year, it's a.
January eleventh through April two thousand and fourteen, that's a long period of time, but still seven and a half million dollars.
I thought we had like a hundred and twenty million, two thousand.
Well, no, but this is just for the county roadway, county road roadway. It's definitely in January. Just for our, for the roadways and the county roads, what's the state?
I'll pay your taxes.
Yeah, no, although severance taxes is huge, like, uh.
We've gone everywhere.
I would recommend we, uh, I'd move if we passed resolutions supporting Judge Fowler's effort to have the Attorney General Opinion WW eight seventy reversed through the legislature.
I see, okay.
All in favor?
All right.
I see. Payment of bills. Uh, somebody has that. Yeah, okay, here's the one that has three seventy.
The one that she supplied us with a sheet of some, uh, talking points on, whatever the pages are.
All right.
Page two, there's a first entry, it's three thousand sixty-five dollars thirty-three cents. Association of Counties, uh, County Reserve and the Unemployment Fund has dipped below the required amount, therefore this payment to adequately fund the servicing. Next you have on page three, midway down, uh, under five hundred, capital outlays. There's two thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars ninety-seven cents fee for returning the audio/video equipment. Uh, the uninstallation occurred on Friday, May twenty-third. And, uh, two thousand and fourteen, also I would want to make comment that the guy told her, the salesman called her, said that if we ever decided to put a video system or something like that into the courtroom, that they would credit us this money back as part of the installation, so it's good. Also, there was nineteen thousand dollars, one hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-five cents for courthouse phase one A. There's also eight thousand ninety-three dollars and thirty-four cents for courthouse phase one B. And a jail had a charge of eight hundred and three thousand ninety-three dollars and thirty cents. If you go to page six, uh, second entry, emergency management, there's two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for repairs to the Fall City Siren. He asked a question why the Fall City Siren, the emergency management group, had gotten a grant years ago, uh, about two thousand eight, two thousand, two thousand eight I believe it was. And all the sirens and all the communities were put in through the emergency management for a grant. And since they've been going, and they have a breakdown, the, we, the county has been steadily repairing the sirens through this part of the grant process. And it's, that doesn't occur very often, but I think this might have been a lightning issue or something. Page nine, the last seven entries are expenditures from the road bonds, a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents. Total expenditures for this cycle is one million forty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Sir?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. On third.
All right.
Excellent, yes.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Not that it's on the agenda or anything, but is there any more work, or we're going to get some mics to the year? Do you know any?
They've been ordered. They were, they were maybe going to be here today, but obviously they're not. But I'm hopeful that they'll be here by the next minute, yes, ma'am. So everybody who doesn't have real loud voice can be heard. Or you can be a loud voice and heard even better.
Also, I'd like to ask Judge, June second in Runge at the VFW, the Food Bank will be distributing food. So pass the word around.
I want to thank citizens for coming and just putting, I think we've had good discussions of the issues, and it's been very civil. I appreciate everybody's input. And, uh, we have mugs in the jury.
I make a motion in the jury.
All right, all in favor? All right, thank you. All right.